All right, everybody. It is now 6:00 p.m., so we will call this meeting to order. Sarah, when you're ready.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Messer.
You.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Commissioner Normile.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Vogel.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am.
At this time, I'd like to invite up for our opening prayer, Mr. Kirk Finch. Up to the podium, yes, sir. There should be a microphone for you up there. Switch would be on the bottom. There we go. Now we're live.
Before I do the prayer, I would like to give a word of special thanks today. The fire department came to Emerald Plantation Shopping Center, helped us put up a new large American flag on the flagpole that's been sitting there for years, empty. So we put up a new flag today, and the fire department helped us, and I thank them very much for their help today. Let us pray. Father, we're so thankful this evening for those who serve you and for those who serve this community. Special thanks this evening, Father, for those who have served in these last few years and who will now be going off. We're thankful for what they have done, for their time, their talents, their energy devoted to this community. And, Father, we ask your guidance upon the commissioners who will take the reins in this next year. Will you give them a clarity of vision? Father, give them the wisdom to find positive solutions to the issues they face. Father, this evening, we ask your blessings upon Emerald Isle. We ask your blessings upon these commissioners, and we ask your blessings upon this meeting. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. All right, please stand with me and face our flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get down into business, I wanted to welcome a special guest tonight, the son of a close friend of mine, middle of the way, or back in the corner there, working towards merit badges for his Eagle Scout. Could we welcome Mr. Ian Lau to our meeting? He's a good man. Ian, thanks for being here. Make sure you tell your mother I said hello, please, sir. All right, item number five would be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And at this time, I'd like to invite up Parks and Rec Director Candace Dooley for the presentation of the Emerald Isle Marathon, Half Marathon, and 5K Pro Series.
Good evening, and thank you for having me for the ninth year in a row. It is a pleasure to be with you this evening and an honor, but I do not deserve to stand here alone, so I'd ask that my committee members and mostly my dear friends, please join me. With me this evening, I have Amy Riordan, Dora LaPake, Patrick Dooley, and Stephanie Whitehead. We had some committee members that weren't able to join us this year. I could not have this race if it were not for these wonderful people standing here with me, and as well as our town staff. Every department has something to do with this race, and they play an intricate part in it, and I'm just very grateful, as I'm sure the beneficiaries are as well, and as well as the runners. So with that, thank you to everyone who was involved, thank you to everyone who volunteered. Took over 300 volunteers to make this race happen, and they come out year after year. We had over 900 participants this year. We represented 33 states, three countries, and three continents, and I think that is something to be very proud of here in small-town Emerald Isle. Thank you. So I'll keep it short, but I'm often asked, why? Why did you start this race? Why is it so important to you? Because I tell everyone, this is Christmas Day for me. It's super special. And there's two big reasons why. One, we give back. We have given hundreds of thousands of dollars to local health-related charities and hopefully saved lives. We've also given back to our local community. I feel that we're blessed to be here and to live here, and so it's our obligation to bless others and be kind to others. So with that, not only is it a great experience, but I'm going to showcase that in a video that our own PIO, Mark Cruz, created for us, so enjoy.
This is my first year running the Emerald Isle Marathon, and I'm hoping to qualify for Boston.
My name's Maria. We're from New Jersey. This is my first time in Emerald Isle and my first time running a marathon.
I'm Kayla from Fargo, North Dakota. This is my first time here. I haven't run a full marathon in quite a few years, but I'm afterwards. I am most looking forward to jumping in the ocean.
I'm Patty. I'm from Charlotte, and this is the first time running Emerald Isle Marathon. I'm so excited.
We're from Concord, North Carolina, and it's our first marathon.
I'm here with a group of nine friends who are enjoying this half marathon at the beach. This is the first time I've ever been to Emerald Isle, and it looks like a wonderful
My name's Grace Morris, and I'm from Winston-Salem, North Carolina. And this is my sister.
My name is Katie. I'm from Cleveland, North Dakota, but I live in Minneapolis, Minnesota now. And we've been training for this marathon for, I don't know, six months, but we've been doing it long distance together, so we call each other, we run, and get all our training in, and now we're finally here to do the real thing. This is our first marathon, and we're doing it together, so hopefully we'll make it through.
It's a great race. Ran over 900 races, and I continue, this is a good race.
Hi, my name is Brittany. I'm from the Houston area, and this is my eighth marathon, so I'm really excited to get out there and run it and hopefully have a little yore.
For capturing those really special moments of race weekend for not only our participants, but also for everyone who was involved. It's really nice to see that. So without further ado, what we've worked so hard for all of this time, and it's time for us to present the money that we raised. And so first, I would like to invite Virginia from Carter General Hospital Foundation to join us up front to accept her $9,000. And the next check for an additional $9,000 will be presented to the Emerald Isle Bike and Pedestrian Path, and we have our chairman, Mr. Mike Taylor, here with us this evening.
Congratulations to everybody, Candace, and every committee member, volunteer, participant. It's really amazing what you guys do every year. It's fantastic work, and I can't fathom what goes into it because I don't volunteer with you, but I can only imagine the undertaking that it is, and the town and the beneficiaries are very grateful. Nice work. All right, item number seven, we have some public announcements.
Welcome to the Town of Emerald Isle's Board Meeting Public Service Announcements. We have some exciting events and important dates lined up for you. The next Coffee with a Cop is November 16th from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. in the Town Boardroom. The Second Annual Emerald Isle Car Show is rescheduled to November 18th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It will be held at the Western Ocean Regional Access. Come check out the car show, listen to music, and check out raffle items donated by area businesses. Online registration is now open until Friday, November 17th at noon. There will be no day of registration. The Emerald Isle Administrative Offices and Community Center will be closed Thursday, November 23rd for Thanksgiving. The administrative offices will be closed on Friday, November 24th. The 20th Annual Emerald Isle Christmas Parade will be held at 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, November 25th. The parade runs along Emerald Drive between Black Skimmer and Mangrove Drive. The next Planning Board meeting will take place on November 27th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. The Holiday Arts and Crafts Fair is coming up on December 2nd from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Community Center. And our next Neighborhood Watch meeting is going to be on December 5th from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. And on Friday, December 8th, join us for a free festive family event. Immerse in heartwarming holiday cinema, enjoy free treats, and don't forget your lawn chair and blanket. And the next Board of Commissioners meeting is on December 12th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m.
All right, thank you very much for that. Commissioner Messer pointed out, we may have a conflict on the date with Coffee with a Cop. On our agenda, it had the 23rd, but can you confirm that it is after tomorrow, the 16th, or someone? Chief, okay, great, thank you. All right, 16th, all right, just making sure. Thank you, thank you. All right, number eight will be our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. All right, next up, we have our outgoing commissioner recognition. I'm going to step around front here and call names. Bear with me just a second. Goofy Reader sunglasses on here. All right, I know you're not a plaque guy, but get up here anyway. It's not up to you tonight. And I told Commissioner Normile when he came in, I hadn't been so thankful to see somebody in person in a long time, so welcome home, welcome Elaine home. I'm over the moon to see you guys, and welcome back. All right, won't keep you up here long, because I know this is not your favorite thing, but we do have a recognition here for you, sir. The Town of Emerald Isle proudly presents this certificate of appreciation to Jim Normile in sincere recognition of your tireless dedication and leadership, serving the Town of Emerald Isle from May of 2022 to November of 2023, though we know it's been longer than that. Commissioner for the Town of Emerald Isle, presented in great appreciation for your dedication and loyalty in serving the citizens of this town and your foresight in planning for the future while preserving our past, presented this 14th day of November 2023. Jim, thank you for your many years of service, thank you for your knowledge and wisdom, thank you for being a mentor to me, be ungrateful. Thank you so much, sir. Got a couple for you. Steve, the Town of Emerald Isle proudly presents this certificate of appreciation to Steve Finch in sincere recognition of your tireless dedication and leadership, serving the Town of Emerald Isle. Commissioner for the Town of Emerald Isle, November 15th through November, excuse me, November 2015 through November 2023, presented in great appreciation for your dedication and loyalty in serving the citizens of this town and your foresight in planning for the future while preserving our past, presented this 14th day of November 2023. Thank you for your dedication, thank you for your service, and thank you for being a mentor to me. I've enjoyed it very much, and I wish you all the best, sir. Don't go away, we got one more for you, sir. A proclamation honoring the service of Steve Finch, Commissioner for the Town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina. Whereas Steve Finch has faithfully served the Town of Emerald Isle as Commissioner since November 2015, and these years of service have been marked by Commissioner Finch's exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, and whereas his performance and duties and responsibilities as Commissioner has been characterized by excellent and constructive contributions to municipal government in our town, and whereas the town desires to recognize and honor Commissioner Finch for the generously giving of his time, talent, and knowledge as a hard-working member of the Town Council. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Jason Holland, Mayor of the Town of Emerald Isle, on behalf of the entire board, do hereby express sincere appreciation and thanks to Commissioner Finch for his distinguished service to the community, and extend him best wishes in all future endeavors. This 14th day of November 2023, Jason Holland, Mayor. Congratulations and thank you, sir. Mr. Messer, you're next. Excuse me. Let me let you see this one first. State of North Carolina, Roy Cooper, Governor, reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and seal of Floyd J. Messer Jr. I do by these presence confer the order of the Longleaf Pine. With the rank of Ambassador Extraordinary, privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is a special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast and select company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the Longleaf Pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the old North State. Roy Cooper, Governor, November 14th, 2023. Congratulations, Floyd. Oh, you're going to get that microphone here in just a second, I promise. All right, next up is a resolution honoring Floyd Messer Jr. for serving over 20 years on the Emerald Isle Town Council. Whereas Floyd Messer Jr. has served as a Commissioner for the Town of Emerald Isle for more than 20 years with dedication and distinction, whereas most of those years have been in the capacity of Mayor Pro Tem, and whereas the people of Emerald Isle recognize you for all of your efforts, diligence, and determination, and whereas your hard work and the sacrifices you've made to serve the town you love. Whereas public service is a calling to serve a cause beyond your own, a chance to give back to the community, and an opportunity to do the most good while making the biggest difference. Whereas the Board of Commissioners wish to express their sincere appreciation and thanks to Mayor Pro Tem Messer by naming the boardroom the Floyd Messer Jr. Boardroom. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Emerald Isle Board of Commissioners that a plaque bearing his name and years of service be prominently displayed in the Town Boardroom as a means of recognizing his many contributions to the Town of Emerald Isle and surrounding communities. Be it further resolved that Floyd Messer, being a distinguished member of the board for the past 20 years, will hold the title of Commissioner Emeritus to recognize his time and talents to the Town of Emerald Isle. This 14th day of November 2023, Jason Holland, Mayor. Congratulations, sir. We have one ordered, a nice brass plaque. It didn't quite arrive yet. Evidently, it takes a minute or two to carve those things out, but as soon as it gets here, we'll have it displayed up in the back there. All right, one more to go. The Town of Emerald Isle proudly presents this certificate of appreciation of Floyd Messer Jr. with the inaugural induction to the Emerald Isle Hall of Fame. In sincere recognition of your tireless dedication and leadership, serving the Town of Emerald Isle. Mayor Pro Tem for the Town of Emerald Isle, November 2001 through November 2023, presented in great appreciation for your dedication and loyalty in serving the citizens of this town and your foresight in planning for the future while preserving our past, presented this 14th day of November 2023. Floyd, it's been an honor. I wish you best in whatever comes next. Thank you for your friendship, thank you for your leadership and being a mentor to me. I've learned a lot, and I wish you best in whatever's coming next. Thank you, sir.
This is a little bit overwhelming, but thank you, everyone, and I've been thinking a lot today about commissioners that I have served with in the past 22 years. Three of them are not with us anymore, Tom Hoover, Nita Hadreen, and Pete Allen. Also served with John Wooten and Pat McElrae. And I told Jay earlier on tonight, don't hesitate to lean on his old man, because he's got a lot of knowledge. And served with three mayors, art school, Eddie Barber, and Jason. And been with these guys up here a little while. I love you all, and thank you for supporting me for 22 years, and this is just overwhelming, but thank you very much.
Room in the truck for all that hardware?
Thank you, Judge.
You're very welcome, sir. Very, very welcome. A lot of years of dedicated service here. It's something that I look up to, and I'm proud to be a small part of, and I'm thankful for all of you men and women, so congratulations to you all. Let's see, make sure I don't miss a spot like I normally do. Okay, item number 10, in reference to UDO text amendment, section 6.3, Stormwater Management Amendment to exclude the requirement for professionally drafted plans outside the special flood hazard areas. So I will, again, that was moved from board meeting before last to the last board meeting, so I'll open it up for discussion and/or action to the board. I'll leave it to you guys.
I'll start, because I'll probably have a non-popular opinion about this for some in the room, but we kicked this down the road at our last meeting, so that, for me personally, it was about doing more research and making sure that we were making the right decision. I wholeheartedly believe that I made the right decision the first time that I voted on this. As we go through the, not reinvention, but the refresh of the UDO that the Planning Board has worked so hard on the last two years or more, voting on these onesie-twosies, for me, for stormwater, doesn't feel responsible. I said it last meeting. I think that I would recommend kicking it back to the Planning Board, because they need to have a holistic view of stormwater, and maybe looking at not just whether we need a professionally engineered stormwater plan, but what's happening with other properties that have been built in the last 30 years, and what do we do with their stormwater plans that were built for those properties 30 years ago. So I think taking this back to the Planning Board for a more holistic view would be a more comfortable spot for me. I'm where I was 30 days ago.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Yes, I served on the UDO Committee, and we didn't just spend an hour or two hours, but we met a dozen times throughout the year, and we put an enormous amount of time and effort studying, dissecting this particular ordinance 6.32, I believe it is, that stormwater management. There are a ton of existing lots that are out there right now, and if we do not pursue the way we are looking at it right now, and denying this motion would allow us to go forth, but we need to consider this, because the future is going to impact a lot of these lots that are out there right now. So this is not something that we just came up with yesterday or the day before. There's been a lot of talk, a lot of effort put into this, and I personally am in favor of denying it.
Thanks, Steve.
I also served on the UDO Committee with Steve, and that was just hour upon hour and meeting upon meeting, dedicated to this one subject, and I would echo his sentiments.
Thanks, sir. All right, well, I will...
Go ahead. I feel like I'm snapping back in on the board. Go ahead.
That's fine. You know, this is a very delicate situation that we're in with this UDO as far as the stormwater is concerned, and you think about one lot, and if it was one lot, and there's not a neighbor to the left or to the right or behind or in front, that's not a problem. But when you ride around this island and you look at a lot, and you look at the lot, and say the lot's slightly in a hole, for example, and the house beside it's been there for 25 years, well, there's an issue then, because if that lot comes up to standard all the way back up again, then the guy that built his house, knowing that hole was beside him when it was built, now is going to have a water issue. And I rode around this island numerous times, looking at lots. I've talked with a lot of builders and stuff, and it wouldn't be right to take the guy next to you that built his house 30 years ago, and then when the person comes beside him and builds that lot to the same level. There's so many factors that go into this, where the water was running down into that hole, and I agree that you can build on your lot, make your lot right, make it good, and I don't disagree with that at all, but in the same sense, though, that lot needs to not dump any more water back on the neighbor. And if I wouldn't have firsthand seen it around Emerald Isle and watched it happen the last six months, year, two years, when I first got elected as Commissioner, six years ago, within a week, I was dealing with stormwater with a neighbor, and they were hitting me apart with it, and I tried my best to figure out the best way to fix it, and there was really no way to fix it, because the water runs down the hill. Their house is at the bottom of the hill, and as every neighbor on that street starts building up, and that house gets developed, before he didn't have a water problem, and now he's got a water problem, because none of the water is being collected all the way down the hill. It's just running straight down the road now, and it runs left and right. There's ways that we've talked about as a town to make the roads a little bit better, that we can adjust the water, and there's some things we need to do in the future, but at the present time, we've got to protect... But at the present time, we've got to protect the neighbors in the front, the back, the side, and the left, and I don't see any other way to not do that at this point unless we have a stormwater design engineer plan. There's ways down the road, but it's going to take time, and it's not fair to the neighbor next to them to get flooded out because we didn't, as a board, take the responsibility to make sure that that lot was going to hold its own water the whole time. And there's a lot of smart contractors out there, but there's a lot of people too, and I've looked at the way they've came through to the planning board, and they've done this thing, and this needs to be done by professional, and needs to be done properly, and it's got to be done right because there's too many people's houses, and I'd hate to be that house next door because this board was irresponsible and let that house get flooded out because of this reason. I say there's some ways down the road that we can make better adjustments and do stuff like it, but right now, we're not at that point, so we've got to stay strong on these lots. So that's my thoughts on it.
Thanks, sir. Words, Commissioner Romo.
I was not on the UDO committee, but if you were to combine my time on the board, I think it's worth about eight years, give or take. In fact, I was reflecting, coming up to this meeting, some of the things we had done and not done on the board the last, what in essence has been eight years. And I think, if I get this number skewed, you correct me, I think over the last eight years, we've bunched up about $60 million in grant monies, and a lot of that money has gone to stormwater management, stormwater mitigation. And when I think about it, the millions that we spent not only in grant monies in trying to manage stormwater, but also from the regular budget each year as well. Spent a tremendous amount of money in the municipality, didn't build any of these neighborhoods, didn't build any of these houses, but the taxpayers are the ones now paying the price financially to fix all the stormwater issues. Certainly the responsible thing to do, go after grant dollars and whatnot, and fix the problem out of it. So I don't think, I'm in the deny mode as far as the motion is concerned. I wasn't on the UDO committee. And I mentioned that dollar amount, Jim's not singularly taking credit for going out himself and bunching up $60 million. That's over eight-year period, but a lot of people doing a lot of great things. But we've spent a lot of fortune in stormwater management and mitigation, and enough's enough. That's my two cents. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. All right, any other discussion on the item? Ask for direction on how to proceed.
I will make a motion to deny the amendment and keep the language as is and require registered, designed, professional stormwater plans for all properties.
All right, the motion is on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion is carried. All right, item number 11 is the presentation of the fiscal year 2023 annual comprehensive financial report. Ms. Roch.
Okay.
So, thank you. So the town's fiscal year ended on June 30th, and...
Said you have one.
There we go. That's a little bit better. Our financial statements are complete, and they're audited, and they are actually on the town's website as of this afternoon, so they are there. And our auditors are S. Preston Douglas of Lumberton. This is the seventh year working with the team at S. Preston Douglas. And tonight, actually, we have Lee Gressom, who's one of the partners there. He's on the phone, and I can hear him, so that's good that the connection is working well. We wanted to invite Lee by phone so he didn't have to travel to comment on the audit, and then I have a few slides that I'll go over on some of the key financial figures. So I'll let Lee speak. I think you're there, Lee.
Yes, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, great. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board. First off, the good news, we issued a clean audit opinion on the financial statements this year, also referred to as an unmodified audit opinion. That's our highest level of assurance. That's essentially using the governmental auditing standards, we felt comfortable to issue this unmodified opinion on the financial statements. So the second audit opinion was the testing of internal controls, which we also had the highest, the town received the highest score as far as there were no internal control findings for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023. And then there was two additional audit opinions related to the compliance work around the federal and state grant expenditures during the fiscal year. There were $1.3 million in federal grant expenditures and over $500,000 in state grant expenditures. So there were compliance work related to those two sets of grant expenditures, and in all cases, we didn't have any compliance issues, and so we had no compliance findings. There were no financial statement findings, and again, we issued a clean audit opinion, also referred to as an unmodified audit opinion. So that's a great thing. So we'll move right along and talk a little bit about internal controls at the town. As I mentioned earlier, we were required to test internal controls in regards to the internal control audit opinion referred to as Yellow Book. During this audit, the financial records that we saw, they were in great shape. They were consistent with previous audits. As Laura mentioned, this is our seventh year auditing the town. There was only one small journal entry that we had to make as we worked through the audit, and that was provided by your finance director. So your finance director did a great job staying on top of all the new accounting standards over the last couple of years. So the books were in great shape overall. There were no budget violations noted. There were no segregation of duties, issues in internal controls. And again, the reporting that the town does each year with the GFPA, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which I think it's nine years straight where we submit the audit report, not only does the local government commission look at the audit report and review it, the GFPA reviews the audit report, and it's a very high standard. So once they review it and they're satisfied with it, the town gets a Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting each year. I think that's nine years straight, going on 10 years. So that's just a good indication that your, the financial information that we're presenting each year has been reviewed, and it's at a very high standard. And your finance director does a great job assisting in preparing the financial report, which was 123 pages this year, and that's no small feat to get through that. There was one new accounting, GASB 96 implementation, so a new accounting standard this year. That's essentially the subscription-based information technology arrangement. So what that is, previous fiscal years, your technology or IT-related contracts would have been expensed as the current year expense. What GASB 96 is getting at is they calculate the present value of the payments over the life of this contract, and you have to capitalize that. And so that's going to show up as a capital outlay during the current fiscal year going forward. So it's just another standard that your staff and finance director has to keep up with, who your finance director's done a great job this year and in the previous fiscal year keeping up with the new accounting standards. So the impact of that GASB 96 this fiscal year was a $352,000 right-to-use IT subscription asset. That was going to be similar to depreciation or capital assets. It's going to be depreciated over the contract's life, over the life of the contract. Couple of housekeeping items. We did not encounter any difficulties with management during the audit. There were no new accounting policies adopted, and we didn't have any disagreements with management, and we did not consult with another auditor during our engagement. The next piece, I know Laura's going to hit on 2023 financial highlights. I'll just hit a couple of points, just kind of high level. The total townwide net position was $32.5 million at June 30th, 2023, an increase of 1.5 million. The general fund added $735,000 this year, so that's a pretty strong increase in the general fund, and then your government-wide statements, again, increased about 1.5, also very positive. Your total governmental funds added 3.3 million to fund balance. And also notable in this fiscal year, as the town received in the previous fiscal year, $588,000 of American Recovery Act money. At the end of this fiscal year, both the American Recovery Act money from this fiscal year and the previous fiscal year has been spent. The one needs improvement item as a result of the audit, as I mentioned before, at the conclusion of the audit, we have to submit the audit to the local government commission, and then also the GFPA reviews the report. The local government commission provides feedback on performance indicators based on metrics that place, you know, where they'd like to see municipalities stack up to other municipalities of relative size. The general fund, although you did add $700,000 this fiscal year, which was strong, the local government commission would like to see the emergency fund and the general fund be at 25% of general fund expenditures. So that's essentially your general fund unassigned fund balance divided by general fund expenditures, and it's as a percentage. So one month is 8.33%, so three months would be about 25%. The town at June 30th, 2023, for this audit, the calculation ended up being at 20.21%. So again, the target's at 25%, and the town reported 20.21% at this fiscal year. My calculation I looked at earlier, just using the numbers for this fiscal year, the town would need to increase unrestricted cash in the general fund by about $280,000 to hit that target. Laura, would you like, would anybody like to comment on that from the town's perspective?
Yes, thank you. In fact, I have a slide at the end of the presentation, so I'll show the numbers, and I agree with that. So yeah, we definitely, I'll get to that as well. I'll go into some of those details.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for that update.
No, no. Oh, sorry. There's a little bit of feedback on my end. So again, just to recap, we issued an unmodified clean opinion. There were no financial statement findings. There were no compliance findings noted, and overall, the financial information was very positive for this fiscal year, with one notable needs improvement, the internal controls in the town. Your finance officer did a great job, and there were no issues with internal controls that we saw. And we've always been impressed, as we've audited the town for the last seven fiscal years, with the, both your manager and the finance director generally strive to be very transparent and very, very good at providing timely information when we're performing the audit. So we definitely, you definitely have a good staff relative to other municipalities that we come across. So again, overall, the great audit from our standpoint, just with that one needs improvement area. Are there any, are there any questions?
I don't see any questions right now. I don't...
Board have any questions? No. No. No, we're good, Lee. Thank you so much, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right.
All right. Lee touched on a few things, and I have some slides so you can see the numbers. I apologize, I didn't have those up when he was speaking, but I'll go through those fairly quickly. I won't keep everybody too long. But I did want to reiterate the comprehensive financial statements. Lee mentioned they're about 123 pages long, but there's a lot of good information. There's a discussion about the activity over the fiscal year, and there's some good statistical trends, 10 years' worth of data, so you can look at property tax history, fund balance history, long-term debt, and other economic indicators are in that document. So I'm going to jump right into the slides, I hope. There we go. Thank you. So the first slide includes the figures that Lee touched on. This is your government-wide balance sheet, and it includes the town's net position, or what I like to refer to as the equity. The key figures are highlighted in green. I'll use the pointer in just a second. Your left column is the 2023 results that compares to 2022, and that change column is the pluses and minuses over all those categories. We ended, oops, make sure I don't advance, a little rusty on the, there we go. I'll just describe it. We ended with just over $38 million in total assets, that top-left green bar highlighted. 25.7 million of this number is capital assets. Your capital assets are land, building, vehicles, both purchased and leased, and assets overall are up from the prior year. We had 7.7 million in total liabilities. The town's long-term liabilities include installment purchase agreements with our banks. It does include vehicle leases, employee compensated absences, and our pension liabilities are all in that number. This number is also up from the prior year, but grand total, bottom-left corner, we're just at that 32.5 million in net position, or what I like to refer to as equity. The majority of this value is in our capital assets. That's that third number above that net position line. 9 million is restricted. The major portion of that restricted figure, let me spit it out, is cash on hand for future beach nourishment projects, and then the remainder is unrestricted. So overall, we saw an increase of 1.5 million, and that really can be attributed to our increases in fund balance in our general fund and also our increase in reserves in the future beach nourishment fund. So that's the big-ticket change year over year. And moving to the general fund, very similar, where I have 23 and 22 in comparison to each other. This is our major operating fund, and as Lee mentioned, we did increase our fund balance by 734,647. That's that green bar in the middle. We had revenues of 12.7 million, expenditures of 12.6 million, and then there was a positive offsetting accounting entry for those leases and software subscriptions that Lee had just mentioned. So that brought us to our 734,647 increase. So our grand total fund balance just for the general fund at year-end was 4.7 million. And I want to talk a little bit about that 734,000. That was a larger increase to fund balance than we normally have on a regular annual increase, I should say. There were two major chunks, if you will, of open commitments at year-end. There were 201,000 in open purchase orders, where we had orders on hand, but the goods were not delivered yet or the work was not complete. One of the big-ticket items, or some of the examples here, are the HVAC unit at the community center. We had a new ditch witch stormwater vacuum trailer that hadn't yet been delivered, a new air compressor system at our fire department, and our tennis court resurfacing project had not yet been complete. We also had in that balance, due to receiving those ARPA funds we had planned on using but had not committed, or not contracted, rather, $150,000 for Emerald Isle Woods Park, and another $131,000 was identified as a project on hold for a stormwater replacement in Cape Emerald. So those big-ticket items, if you take that out, we had about 252,000 of fund balance that was just unassigned or unrestricted that went straight to fund balance. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the other funds that we have, not the general fund. I'll switch to the other funds, and I apologize, I realize this is a little bit small. We have 12 other funds or other projects that are reported in the financial statements. fund. I'll switch to the other funds and apologize, I realize this is a little bit small. We have 12 other funds or other projects that are reported in the financial statements. And on the left-hand side, you have our beginning fund balance and then you have the activity for the fiscal year. And on the right-hand side is the ending fund balance, you know, at June 30. So the top right corner, the balance there that I want to highlight is our future beach nourishment fund. That's our other large project and we ended at just 6.8 million dollars. Other funds with balances include, include the special events fund with $40,000, which was primarily the fishing tournament, they had a reserve, the bike and pedestrian fund with just under 73,000 on hand for future projects, the golf cart infrastructure fund with just about $4,000 there, and then a reserve that's held for our dog park construction project of 32,000. So those are the other funds. There's, there were activity in some of the other funds. You see our FEMA 428 projects, but there was no balance at year end. And I'm going to jump back to the general fund and this is partly, the next few slides are talking about our fund balance in compared, in comparison to our expenditures and that's what Lee had mentioned on the phone before we switched to the slides. This graph is one that we track annually. It's always in our budget book and we also review it at fiscal year end. The town's adjusted fund balance is our, one of our policies that we are measuring as as a metric. That's 16 years' worth of data and again, I realize it's a small slide, but on the left-hand side, you have 2008 and the far is 2023. In 2008, we had 2 million in adjusted fund balance and today we're at just about 4.6 million in that category. Adjusted fund balance is unassigned fund balance plus an amount that's considered, considered restricted for state statute. And so if you look at the colors, the blue coloring on the bottom is the unassigned or what unrestricted, I guess you could say, and that orange or red color at the top is the restricted amount. And that's important when you see these calculations, when we compare the town's metric to the state statute. Here's the calculations and so the town's fiscal policy are, we require that we have an adjusted fund balance, that it must be 25% of total expenditures. And that's that top calculation where I have a town policy calculation. The goal is to increase that to about 50% if we can. Currently, we're at 35.56%. So that has gone up since last year, so that's the good news. We're going in the right direction there. However, the state, which is what Lee mentioned, has a different calculation and you can see that numerator under the statutory calculation on the bottom is a much lower number. The reason is they don't consider our restricted fund balance in that formula. And so that gets us to the 20.21%. And so we went down a little bit over last, or compared to last year. We'd like to see that at a minimum 25 and going towards that 50% goal. The major reason for this decline was we had open receivables due to our FEMA 428 grants and at June 30, that amount was actually 697,000. So we had spent monies and we were waiting for FEMA to have that, get that reimbursement back to us, which we, we have been reimbursed as of today. So had we not had that, that percentage would be much higher. And so last but not least, I'm going to really get it with a really tiny slide. This, I wanted to include it in the slide so you could see it. This is actually the document that we, and it's an Excel spreadsheet that we work with, with the state, and so I'll zoom that up for you, just illustrating again that that's the, the state's guidance. We had been tracking on an upward trend and we, we were planning, we probably normally in a normal operation would have had an upward trend above that 25%, but that graphically you can see we're at the 20%. And that bottom box shows the municipalities, municipalities above a $10 million expenditure budget would, they would want to see a minimum of 25% and the median for other municipalities is the 46%. So that's a goal that we're working towards. I'm confident that the town can meet that 25%. Actually, when we did the calculations, you know, it was, I was planning on it, I thought we would be there, but I had forgotten about the 428 projects. And I'm very happy with the results that we had this fiscal year with the positive figures. And if you have any questions, I'll end with those high, high level. I know I probably plowed through it, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Or if you have any detailed questions, please let me know and I'll, I'll get you an answer.
Thank you, Laura. Any comments or questions from the board?
Good job again, Laura, as always.
Yeah, I sit on the board last few years, this audit board with Laura, and it's, it's just amazing to see how all the different departments and all the needs of the town and stuff and how she's able to balance it and put it all together. It's, it's just overwhelming for me, for my little peanut brain to figure it all out. And it's, it's just, I mean, hands down, Laura, you're, you're the, you're the heart of the whole operation as far as the money goes. And it's, it's amazing to watch how you do it and how it all turns and twists and everything. And with that state level, as we, as you talked about and explained, you know, that money was out there and because we, the way I understand it is that we were, you think about three years ago or four years ago, we had Florence hit us and look where we are out today and, you know, how this island's recovered from all this stuff. And it took a lot of money and a lot of grant money to make this happen. A lot of times when that money would, that grant money would be promised to us, but it wouldn't be here yet, so the town used their own money, waiting for us to get paid back and eventually we got paid back. So all these numbers are bouncing up and down all the time and it's, it's got to be nerve wracking to hope that the money doesn't cut off when you're trying to fix a street or do something else. But I mean, just congratulations. Thank you so much for what you do for us.
Thanks, sir.
I have a couple of things. Again, congratulations, the certificate of achievement in financial reporting nine years straight, going on 10 years is, I'm not sure about other municipalities around the state, but that feels like a huge accomplishment. So amazing job to you and the rest of the staff that work on this. The GASP 96 that Lee was, was discussing, I think, you know, moving forward and in the next 10 years, technology is going to continue to be a challenge as it relates to the town budget. But I do think that I want to give some kudos to the staff that going to subscription-based IT work instead of in-housing that and being able to depreciate that and use that in the way that we did in the budget was really creative and a great idea. I've worked with teams in private business that want to IT everything in-house and it's really expensive. So great work there. I do want to touch on the increase to fund balance, Laura. I want to just call out that those open projects like the HVAC unit, that's on order, and the ditch witch stormwater vacuum, that's on order, the compressor and the tennis court resurfacing, those funds going back into the fund balance isn't for lack of trying on those projects, right? We've been working towards, yes, please.
Yes, so the, there was a major delay on HVAC equipment and unfortunately, it ran nearly 12 months. And so that has been completed in the fall of this year. So the HVAC is complete and we were able to get and take delivery of a brand-new ditch witch track, trailer. And unfortunately, that had almost an 18-month lead time and we had been aggressively pursuing our multiple vendors to get it. So those two items are now complete and the system, our stormwater system, which we have been manually cleaning every month for years, is now able to be assisted with this pull behind trailer. So it's increasing the expediency of our staff, but also improving the efficiency of how we're doing it. So the storm drains are now cleaner than they have been. So those two items are there. Unfortunately, the tennis court vendors are very, there's only a few of them and our vendor was working hard to try to get to us. He had promised to be here by June. It pushed to August and now here we are in November. So we've communicated with the Outer Banks Tennis Contracting Company and that project will now need to be pushed to spring of '24 and potentially rebid with the new, new process because those prices will probably go up. So there has been material at our tennis courts for months. Those materials have, will be moved by the vendor and continue to clean up in that area. And so we will ask the incoming board to consider the tennis court resurfacing in '24. So most of those are cleaned up now at this point and does that address?
Yes, it does.
Laura, thank you so much. Nice job.
Yes.
It's a lot. It was a lot when I started and still a lot now and I do my best to wrap my head around it, but thankful for you. It's, it's quite a bit once you dig into it. So thank you, thank you to you and yours. I'll get it out eventually. All right, item number 12 will be public comment. Public, have three minutes each to address the board with any, oh, excuse me, I missed one, sorry. We'll need a motion to accept the 2023 annual comprehensive financial report. Is there a motion on the floor?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion's carried. Thank you, Steve. All right, now we'll move on to public comment. Anyone that has signed up, if you hadn't signed up or forgot to sign up or missed it, don't worry, we can go by show of hands when everybody else that has signed up has spoken. So there'll be a microphone at the podium. When Sarah calls your name, please come up. Your time will start, please keep it to three minutes. Once three minutes is up, I'll hold up my trusty little American flag there, that means your time's up. You don't have to stop mid-sentence, but if you would, finish your thought, be respectful to everybody else's time. And thank you all for being here. And Sarah, when you ready?
Mark Brenniss Holtz.
Good evening, sir.
On off switch on the bottom there.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mark Brenniss Holtz, 9322 Ocean Drive. Two quick, well, one quick one. The, I just found out this evening that we are not planting winter-ried grass in the corridor and, which we've done for many, many, many years. And it kind of keeps the corridor a little bit more emerald in the wintertime and it's kind of turning brown now, but I, I think that's disappointing that we're, we're not planting ryegrass in the, in the 58 corridor. Second item is about the bike path, which is arguably the second biggest attraction of the town after the beach itself. And there are maintenance issues with it. There is some dangerous crumbling going on on the sides of the paving, particularly through the woods between the Welcome Center and the Pacific Beach Store there. There's a lot of breakdown and it's getting a little bit on the dangerous side for, you see people pushing strollers and, and people passing each other on the path and the path is getting narrower. So I was told over a year ago that the funding is in place to make repairs on the bike path and we've just seen Candace with another $9,000 donation to, to the path. And I'd like to see that put into action. And it's, there's been a little bit of work that's been done down toward the point on Coast Guard Road and, but unfortunately, it hasn't been really completed satisfactorily. You need to bank up the side so that the asphalt doesn't crush down. That's what DOT does when they repave a street. That's what we've done when we repave our streets, is bank, bank up the side so it doesn't crush down. So, but I'd like to see some action on that, hopefully during the off-season and get some of those repairs made. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I muted myself. Paige Taylor Ward.
Evening, Paige.
My name is Paige Taylor Ward and I live at 326 Live Oak Street and I wanted to thank you all for your service to the town of Emerald Isle. I'd also like to thank all the people that stepped up to serve the town of Emerald Isle. 12 people run in for three seats, speaks volumes. When researching some items that had been presented to my husband, Jeff Ward, it was hard to believe that you had to sign in and make an account to get public information off our town website. I don't know of any other municipality that requires you to have an account to get public information. It brings me to my next point, which I've brought to you before, about the $156,000 IT vendor located in South Carolina. We have sister companies that have used the same company, VC3. And there's a local company here in Carterick County that does the same thing for a fraction of the cost. You get emails, voicemails, when you get a phone call, just like you do with VC3. You also get the IT vendor to make the retention records available and they take care of all of that for you. So to me, I think that if one small change would save around $100,000 a year. We don't have money for roads. I mean, we can't depend on the state for the Powell bill monies. It's just not enough considering the amount of volume that's used here in Emerald Isle. So maybe we could possibly use that money for roads. And the 1% tax increase that we had for the bike path that in this year was just rolled into the general fund, I honestly thought that that was a surplus of $187,000 that was supposed to have been refunded to the taxpayers. I didn't see where that happened. Why can't we do that for the roads? And I don't understand why we have so many social media platforms because that's not free and we need to tighten our belts. So I don't see why we should be having all those social media platforms, especially when the taxpayers already pay for the TDA, which advertises, you know, in the airline magazines to bring people here. So I think we could take a look at the things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Jeff.
First, I want to thank all the members of the Board of Commissioners for their service. I really appreciate all of you. And over the course of the last two years, I've realized how much work you really do. I think the town appreciates you as well. We had a historic election. We had a historic number of candidates. We had a historic number of voters for an election that was only for municipal candidates. We had a historic election where four Board of Commissioners seats were open. The people have spoken and I believe the people spoke because they were paying attention, because they were genuinely concerned about our island and the direction our leaders will take it in the future. It is ironic how things come full circle. Candace Dooley was elected for a four-year term as Commissioner and stepped down after a few months to take Alicia Sanderson's job when Alicia retired. Now Alicia Sanderson will fill that same seat left vacant by Ms. Dooley. Ms. Sanderson's 30-plus years of experience and service to the town will be a blessing. I believe Mr. Brownlow, Mr. Sawyer, and Mr. Witten, referred to as the Three Stooges by by a board member, hopefully in jest, will do just fine. They seem to have their finger on the pulse of the town and the vision the residents have for the town's future. Commissioner Taylor and Mayor Holland, I believe, will be the anchors of the new board. And all board members will be the compasses we need for Emerald Isle. I hope the new board will take a very close look at all leadership positions within our town government. If they feel that any leader within town government does not have his or her finger on the pulse of the town and its residents, that they will not hesitate to address that issue as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, ma'am.
Irv Monclova.
Good evening, Irv. Irv, Irv, Mr. Monclova, hold that mic up so the people at home can hear you, please, sir. I think it takes a second for it to... Sarah, would you please give him a hand, if he'd like?
Is that on?
Yeah, you're good. There you go.
There are two things that I would like to mention that I think this board, not all of them were here when that happened, but there are things that happened by members of this board some years ago. Number one is we have probably today the best police force that I have ever been in 11 states I have lived in. And the thing that changed was the fact that we were able to establish the rapport between citizens and the police department, that we did it through a Neighborhood Watch program, which is still in place, and hopefully, the new board will support it to get ahead. It's got to be funded. It's got to be kept. We have over 140 people members here. The second thing that I would like to mention is how incredible, for four years, we have had already the flag up.
No, sir. I'll make sure everybody heard you. Hold that mic up a little higher.
For four years, we have seen a transformation of the equipment that our people are willing or have to work with. For four years, we have given all departments new tools to do their mission. Maintenance have gone down, therefore, more productive time from the workers are now available to perform. Very important thing that has occurred. And the people that made that happen is the town leadership, which I think has done a heck of a job. The third thing that I would like to mention is the fact that the person that today got the Hall of Fame for the first time in Emerald Isle is also the guy that came up with Nice Matters, and I think that's a very great thing that they have done. I think he deserves an honorary applause for that. To the new board, I do have some messages for you, but I'll keep those for some other time. Good night. God bless you all.
Thank you, Irv.
Thank you.
All right. No one else signed up? Anyone else in the audience have a public comment? Thank you very much. All right. Item number 13 will be comments from our town clerk, attorney, and manager. Sarah, anything to add? Oh, lost it. AW, anything to add?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mrs. Zap?
Yes, sir. Real briefly, I want to bring to the public's attention that we're continuing our FEMA Grant 428 work. We have three areas that are in queue currently. We're doing work on Vogue Inlet and Cedar Street. The sections of those roadways are approximately $200,000 apiece, and 100% of that work is being federally funded. Now, the construction crews began work on or around the 1st of November, and they're doing Vogue Inlet and Cedar Street at the same exact time. So, they are doing curbing on one street and then went to Second Street. Then they're coming back. They're putting the culvert this week into Vogue Inlet, so there will be some disruption on Vogue Inlet. And then, once they get that completed following the Thanksgiving holiday, they'll come back to Cedar Street. So, you'll see the teams moving back and forth, and what they're doing is leveraging the efficiencies and trying to decrease the interruptions to our motorists that are traveling in and around Vogue and Cedar Street. Then again, they will come back and repave those entire sections with a single mobilization. So, Thomas Simpson Construction not only received the bids to do both Vogue Inlet and Cedar Street and will be doing their paving, but they also received the bid of nearly $160,000 to do our annualized Powell Bill paving. So, you're going to have a substantial amount of asphalt work that should be occurring between today and the start of the new year. So, we want to let you know that those roadways that we've referenced to the tune of approximately $450,000 in asphalt work should be completed over the next 60 days. Then Old Ferry is currently scheduled to begin on January in 2024, immediately following the new year. An alternative contractor won that process. The Old Ferry roadway improvements will include a brand-new culvert at that area and substantially less asphalt work, as Old Ferry is currently in very good condition. I would like to thank Mr. Brenniss Schultz for commenting on the bike path. With the donation that you see tonight, that should take our $72,000 plus nine well into that $80,000 range. It'll go back into Bike and Ped, and I think that our Bike and Ped Committee is doing a very good job of trying to help us figure out how to reinvest those. We did do substantial maintenance over the summer of 2023, and those maintenance improvements on the bike path began at the east end and made their way all the way down. But as Mr. Brenniss Schultz helped us see tonight, there are serious issues with underwash that has occurred with a lot of stormwater movement, specifically in that area from the TDA back through the wooded area. And so, we're going to do our very best to get that addressed in this offseason as well. Regarding cybersecurity, the idea about VC3 and the vendor came up, and I think Commissioner Vogel addressed it today. It's a very comprehensive approach that we take. And so, although the sticker shock of that $100,000 vendor may seem high, we've ran multiple scenarios, and I thank Ms. Paige Taylor Ward for bringing up an alternative vendor. But as the person that helps sit on the risk mitigation and management for the state of North Carolina with the League of Municipalities, the number-one threat to small towns, which happen to be around 540x of us in the state of North Carolina, is cybersecurity. And so, we are very blessed in Emerald Isle to not only be partnered with VC3 that helps protect us from that type of threat that could put us at serious risk, but I would like to take an opportunity to thank Greg Hayes, who's currently on our team. The beauty about working and living in this community, you have a lot of very educated, well-intentioned, and extremely, extremely gifted human beings, and we are fortunate that some of those folks on a second and/or third career have opted to come back into public service. And one of those champions is Mr. Hayes. He has done a tremendous job of filling the gap in IT. He's that friendly voice that if you call today, you're going to get "Happy Tuesday, this is Greg," and/or if you're looking to fill out a permit or anything else, Greg has been our go-to to backfill that point. So, as a preferred vendor with the North Carolina League of Municipalities, I can stand behind the decision that we have currently engaged to maintain VC3, which was an establishment of my predecessor, Mr. Rush, who saw the foresight to have a completely mobile system that could be stood up after a disaster. So, we're also paying for that service. And again, Mr. Hayes has us a ready-to-go bag. In the event that there is a catastrophe on the island, we can pick up and maintain operations smoothly and move ourselves to the mainland. So, that's partially what you're seeing in those costs. And one thing about social media that's super interesting, I'll reach out to Mr. Ward to find out how and why he would have ever had to log in. That is news to all of us, as we were shaking our heads, looking around. All of our information is readily and free available and 100% transparent. We have over 500,000 individual users annually to our website. We're currently over 50, I believe, headed to 52,000 followers on Facebook, and we'd like to applaud Mr. Cruz for helping us monetize Facebook. We received a check last month for $500 in ad revenue that is immediately coming back through Facebook. And we also are working to monetize our YouTube channel, which helps us disseminate information to the residents and property owners that may not have the opportunity to live here full-time. So, our reach is quite global. So, the reason that we have those multiple platforms is to reach not just those folks in our specific zip code, but those that call Emerald Isle home but may lay their head somewhere else multiple months out of the year. In addition to that, we're a very diverse community, although that our median age is now 57, headed to 58, which makes us about 20 years plus on the North Carolina average. We have seen an uptick in young people with little over 320 engaged school-aged children living on the island. So, now, we have to figure out a way to communicate. I'm not going to make the jokes that my kids make to me. I don't even know the words they're using, let alone the platforms that they're communicating on, but I can tell you this, that there are multiple platforms, and we're trying every single possible way to communicate. We're still going to be on our website. We're using Facebook. We're using Instagram. We're using all kinds of opportunities to reach folks. So, text messaging and mass emails, there's currently a little over 13,150 people that receive our monthly newsletter, which comes out on the 1st of the month in Emerald tidings. And I'd like to applaud, as Mr. Monclova indicated, the police department has done a great job with their Neighborhood Watch and now Second Communications. So, we provide you a touch on the 1st and on the 15th of each month. So, thanks to Chief Panzarella and their team in community engagement. So, it does, some first blush can appear to be sticker shock, but when you dive into all the details, we're well-protected, we're in a ready-to-go bag, and we're trying to leverage all these nearly $14 million in federal and state-funded grant opportunities. And I would like to thank Commissioner Normall over the last eight years to bring out $61.3 million is on the spreadsheet that we were able to put together. So, that's a laundry list of people. That's a whole amount of great work. And even if you're watching what we're doing today, we're opening bids tomorrow for our generators. So, one of the next big things for anyone that stays down the Coast Guard Road area, want to let you know that we're working on opening bids to put loadside generation or backup generators at each of these critical stormwater pumps, and they'll be automated. So, in the event that a Florence 2018 happens to hit us again, that those pumps would stay on and move the water to keep your homes and families safe, even if the power goes out. And what we've done advance of that, as we were working on Doe most recently, we're putting those power lines underground, and we're working in cooperation with Carteret Craven Electric to do that. So, first phase was to identify the threat of the overhead lines, moving them underground. The second was putting in loadside generations and backup generators. So, these were key things that we identified immediately in 2018 following Hurricane Florence. So, all of these great items are conveniently located on the front of our website under Current Projects, and that's another Greg Hayes save. He saved us nearly $30,000 by self-coding and developing that forward-facing Active Projects list. So, thank you for your time. I have any other questions that the board has, I'll be glad to answer, but I wanted to hit some of those highlights tonight for the people that are with us.
Thanks, sir. All right. Now we'll move to comments from our Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Taylor.
All right. Thanks. Thanks to all y'all for coming out and being part of the meeting tonight. It's great to see a bunch of friendly faces again. I'd like to thank Candace and her team for putting on another great race for us, and all they've done nine years. That's just amazing. And for Mark, it's amazing watching the video. And, you know, I'm not a runner, but it almost made me want to be a runner watching your video, almost. But thanks, Candace, for what you've done with all your team and the things you've done for us. I can't thank this board that I'm sitting up here right now with Flor, Jim, and Steve, and my lady down there. It's the guidance that they've given me is coming in six years ago and being a junior person and letting me have the honor to sit beside them and treating me as one of them for a little while has been amazing. I'll truly miss you, but yeah, it's been great, and I've enjoyed working with you. To the new board coming in, I can't think, looking very excited about your new ideas and the way the Commissioners elect are all here tonight. So, that's our new leader sitting out there right now, and I'm happy to welcome you all up here, and I mean, it's going to be fun to work together. So, thank you for that. Once again, for this board sitting up here now, on Thursday, I was told by Candace, they're going to be planting about 7,000 bubs. I think Transpation Impact is going to volunteer along with our local workers, and they're going to plant a bunch of bubs. So, calls of this board up here, they've, 7,000 bubs in the spring will be blooming out there. I did like to, all through the greenway and stuff, like to learn a little bit more from you, Matt, about the gentleman mentioned something about the grass and stuff, and I wasn't quite sure on that one, but we can maybe talk about that down the road a little bit, about the green grass planting for the fescue or something like that. But I just want to say thank you. It's an honor. I hope you all have, get to spend some time with your families over Thanksgiving and have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Finch?
First of all, I'd like to thank Laura for another year of job well done, and to Ms. Candace Dooley, you've outdone yourself again. What can I say? I'd also like to just say to the new Commissioners that are going to come onboard, thank you for your effort and your time, and look forward to seeing you guys and girls come up here and take care of Emerald Isle and do an outstanding job. I'd also like to just thank each and every one of you for maybe putting up with me for the last eight years or allowing me to serve you. It's been an honor and a privilege, and I'm not going anywhere anytime soon, so I'll be keeping an eye on you. One thing that Floyd brought up, nice does matter. It makes a whole lot of difference in our lives every day. Lastly, I would just like to say to Matt and to these Commissioners and to all the different departments of Emerald Isle, it's been a privilege working with you and getting to know you. You are an outstanding group of individuals that work together so diligently as a team that you're amazing. What can I say? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Messer?
Yeah. First off, congratulations to the new Commissioners elect. Had a chance to talk with Roy just a few minutes before the meeting, and wish you all the best. Expect a lot of hard work, because that's what it is. When you're trying to make decisions that affect a lot of people, it takes a lot of thought and a lot of work, but you'll be fine. Congratulations Candace on another great marathon, Laura on another great audit report. When I was mentioning the people that I had served with earlier, and understand, this was a little bit overwhelming for me, but I thank the people for supporting me for 22 years. And in that 22 years, I have only worked with two town managers in 22 years, being Matt Zap and Frank Rush. And in my opinion, probably the two best town managers in the state of North Carolina. It's been my pleasure to work with you. And thanks again for supporting me for 22 years, and I'm not going anywhere either. I'll be right here. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Vogel?
Congratulations to the new Commissioner elects. Thanks you, thank you to those coming off of the board for everything the last couple of years. It's been a wonderful experience to serve the town of Emerald Isle beside you. Floyd, I'm not sure you were at Ronnie's event during the last election when I made this comment, but when I was in my very early 20s, I met you, and you inspired me to one day be a hopeful person to serve on this board. And so, I thank you for that very much and your leadership over the years. And thank you, Irv, for being here tonight as you are almost every night, but it was his idea to have the Hall of Fame for Emerald Isle and to honor people who have done wonderful things for our community. So, congratulations to you, sir. Congratulations again to Candace. The two causes that the funds went to, the bike and pedestrian path, great comments from Mr. Brenniss Schultz, and I saw a manager swiftly writing notes down, but also the Carteret Healthcare Foundation goes to serve a lot of needs in our community. So, I'm super thankful that Virginia got to be here tonight, and the foundation was a recipient. Laura, amazing work. Once again, thank you very much. I do want to point out a couple of things. I'm not sure many in the room know what the Tourism Development Authority or the TDA, as has been mentioned in this room, does. The town of Emerald Isle doesn't spend any money on attracting guests to come to our area. That's the job of the TDA. That's what the bed tax, when people come here to stay, that's what those dollars go towards, as well as beach renews. what those dollars go towards, as well as beach for nourishment funds. So their singular purpose is to get people here. They are spending dollars, as Mrs. Page said, to get folks heads in beds in our county. They do a terrific job, but the public safety and handling all of that influx of visitors is on us once they get here. So it is important to communicate, it is important to have information on our website and all of our social media channels. Congratulations to Mark and team for being able to monetize that, and I look forward to seeing great things as you go forward with that. To not have those things, in my opinion, would be a giant step backwards in transparency and communications for the town. And Mark, just, it's trans impact.
Oh, trans impact. Thanks, thanks for your break. I thought I'd...
Work hard on that, man.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all I got, thanks very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Norma?
The advantages of going last is that everything's already been covered. And so I just echo everything that's been said, and thank you for allowing me to serve. So I'll just close with compliments to one of our departments, how about that? And not reinvent that same wheel, if that's, if I can do that respectfully. So, but to the new ones, new board members coming on, congratulations, I will echo that. So I'll close, I want to talk about our EMS folks, and many of you probably know why. And I'm going to be a minute or two, if that's okay, Mayor. In mid-August, Elaine, my wife, suffered a horrible catastrophic event at home. Something happened up here with a title that's about that long that I can't pronounce, but in essence, it was a horrible, we'll simplify it and say it was a brain bleed. It was horrific, it was horrible. EMS came to our home, I called EMS, of course, they were there in no time. Thankfully, not long ago, we had moved a unit to Station 2. And without that initial, a lot of things went right, and we recently brought Elaine home, but a lot of things went right. We had a paramedic team close by, we lived down past Station 2 at Fifth Street is where Elaine and I lived, and they were there in no time. And then the other team arrived, and I think they knew, and I haven't sat down with Joe, Lindsey, Matt, and David yet, Elaine, when Elaine gets a little better, we're going to sit down with them. But the other team arrived, the paramedic team arrived, and I think they knew just how serious this event was, and they put a helicopter from Greenville on standby, with no x-ray, no, just an evaluation as she laid. It was horrible, absolutely. I served in three wars, and when you have your wife, it was horrible. But they knew from the beginning, I think, exactly what had happened. We only, of course, they took Elaine and off they went with the ambulance. We spent maybe 20 minutes at Carteret General, they did also a wonderful job. But in 20 minutes or less, the flight team came in, just pushed me out of the way and said, "Is that Elaine?" I said, "Yes." They still had their helmets on from the helicopter. "You don't understand, we've got to go now." "Yes." I still had no idea really what was going on. And so within less than 20 minutes, I'm guessing at Carteret General, she was airlifted out to Greenville, I was contacted. I started driving towards Greenville, I was contacted by a surgeon standing in the OR waiting for her to land. And so from the compliment to EMS, I could never say enough, that the timeline from EMS arriving at our home and her completing surgery was less than two hours in Greenville. Wow. At the trauma center. And after that, as many as you know, I just want, I don't know how many call, hundreds literally, calls, texts, emails, from many of you that are here, prayers from our local churches, Sunday School classes. Spent, Elaine, we spent 71 days on the third floor in the glass cube in Greenville. Our manager. Matt would show up in the middle of the night. I have no idea what, just the middle of the night, and he was one of the few that had a pass to get into the cube. And, "What are you, what are you doing?" And he said, "I just, you know, just want to pray for. I just come to check on my friend, check on my commissioner, check on..." I know you're a humble guy and probably don't want me saying things like, "You're a good man." And others, I think everybody had come at some point in time, but the biggest thing is, we invested, we invested in our paramedics, and I know the new board will maintain that level, I'm sure of that, but it's working. Having two teams on across coverage, a great span of coverage for all of our citizens across the island. Without that team from Station 2, she just wouldn't be here. So thank you for your prayers, thank, I was absent for a few meetings, I know I responded to every email and phone call, I did return business-wise. Thank you for excusing me, I was at the right place doing what I needed to do with Elaine, but I love you all, I mean it. Thank you for all those prayers. I think that's enough.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. That's a lot, and...
That's ending on a, you can't end on a better note than that, my brother.
You got it. No, you nailed it, and it puts to light what, everything that the board does and what town staff does, and nothing's wrong. You don't know what's going on, nothing, you drive up and down the road, I've said it before, you drive up and down the road, everything looks normal. There's a reason that it looks normal, because a million things go on behind the scenes that until it's in our backyard or staring us right in the face, we don't think about it, we take things for granted. So hats off to everyone at the town staff level, volunteers, our first responders, and again, a most heartfelt welcome home. Nothing short of a miracle. That being said, I want to just give one more thank you to our outgoing commissioners. I've learned a lot from you over the past two or three years, I'm sure I'll learn a lot more going forward. Enjoy your time off, you've earned it. I want to thank everybody that ran for a seat in this year's election. It takes a lot, it takes a lot of care and a lot of heart to want to do this and to put yourself out there and to be willing to serve. So congratulations to everybody that threw their hat, or threw their name into the hat, it's a big deal and it's a lot. I want to welcome our commissioners-elect. I had a chance to say hello to Jay and Dud on the way in, Josh, I missed you somehow, but welcome, and congratulations to all three of you. I'm looking forward for you all to have the opportunity to get sworn in and dig in and get, I know you did your due diligence in your research ahead of the election, but looking forward to you getting sworn in and dig your heels in and get an even greater feel for how our town takes. I think you'll find it very, very useful when you start making the calls that's best for all of the island. Best wishes to you all, and I'm here if you need me. Thanksgiving's coming up, time to give thanks. You have friends that are affected by tragedy, you have your own family that can be affected by tragedy, and it'll slap you in the face, and it'll make you sit down and think of all the things you have to be grateful for and to not take them for granted. So I encourage everybody this Thanksgiving season to sit down, do some reflecting, and truly give thanks, and don't take anything for granted. That's all I have to say. I will, before I make a motion to go into closed session, we'll let everybody know that we're about to go into closed session. Once that motion is carried, we'll go into closed session. Everyone in the audience, if they ask to leave the boardroom, we'll discuss what we have to discuss in closed session, we'll come out of closed session, and we will immediately adjourn, we won't have any other business to discuss. So that being said, I'll ask for that motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.116 to discuss personnel.
Motion's on the floor, all in favor? All right, motions carried. Thank you all for coming.